The time is 5:04. We'll open the August 2023 meeting of the zoning board of the field. We have three items on our regular agenda. The first is 15 Church Street. Everybody has a copy of the submitted information. So 15 Church Street, and there's lots of photos to kind of explain this, is a request to like remove a porch and build a two-story addition to the house which would encroach, I think it's somewhere between three feet five and three feet 11 away from the side yard property line, which is a little bit closer to the property line than the porch is, but the same distance as the side of the existing house. The setback requirement for that would be 10 feet, so it would require relief to reduce that to three foot five to three foot 11. Has everybody had a chance to drive by or had any questions about what the request is?
There's, I don't know, because the other house on the corner unfortunately, the door needs to be carried out.
Yeah, I can't see through the window.
That's, that's far enough from the setback.
Oh, it's pretty, oh, okay, I was looking at the drawing.
Yeah, yeah. Which means, I don't think that's really, I think that's a different. Yeah, I agree. And so, I mean, that makes sense. It's not like they're going against each other. Preserves some space.
And then the spatial rejection, those way?
Yeah.
Well, that's for public.
It's setback.
I'll walk along that and just preview all that.
Has H-Part, where is this, or they're doing a review of it?
H-Part has done a preliminary review of it, and they're working with Will, the designer, to just change the design. The roof was a little too high, whatever, so he wasn't granted approval at that point. Let's go get the variance, and he's coming back next week to H-Part.
So, all right, all right. So you'll, one thing with it, we'll need to know in addition to like a footprint is the height.
Okay.
Because that sets the mass that's within the setback, which I think you'll know after you go to your next H-Part meeting, I guess.
I mean, yeah, I did put in an estimated height.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
No, it's okay. With the roof reduced, but again, like, they might tell me that doesn't need some wiring and might get, it'll get shorter, I think.
Okay. So this is picky, but, and it will be obviously less than this. The dimension you gave us, the ridge.
Yes.
When we measure the roof height, it's actually the midpoint, and, and in your case, I would say it's nearly
It's 24'7".
Right, but that, but that is, but the entire, there's only like the first seven feet of this, or less than seven feet, that actually would be, and so it would be, all of it would be lower than the ridge.
True.
So, so it's probably not as, doesn't need to be as big a number as that.
I mean, the point, you're talking about the point at the top, from the ridge of the house.
Right.
You don't want that, you want somewhere down here, is that?
I would say, yeah, I mean, it'll depend on what kind of roof you end up with, but all we care about is the height that's being required, the setback, because we
Oh, within 10 feet.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. And, and I honestly don't know, like, actually typically what we, when you measure the height, it's actually the midpoint between the eve and the ridge.
Okay.
And it's on a pitched roof like that, so, so you're, so it's not as extreme as the number that you've given.
Okay.
But, so
That's good enough.
Okay. So when you figure out with H-Part whatever the pitch is, if you could just kind of give us the height of the piece that needs the setback. Does anybody else have any other information they need or any question?
So, all this is going away?
Right.
Yeah, oh, okay, all right. But we're in the same footprint.
Well, it extends out, yeah, a couple feet.
This, but it is sent out here, and, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it matches the
Yeah, right.
The side elevation there.
And the side are okay anyway.
Right.
Susan, the measurement of the height,
Right.
does it start from, as in the photo, from the sole plate of the house, or does it go to the foundation, to the ground?
Yeah, to the ground.
Okay. Looks like the drumming is going just to the
It's just going to the plate, it's not going to
Right, so it'd be another 18 inches or whatever.
Okay, so this requires a public hearing, and we'll set that up for the September meeting. And in the, in the meantime, Chris will send notices to all your adjacent neighbors.
Okay.
It's always a good idea, particularly for the directly impacted neighbor next door, to speak with, speak with hers directly.
Yeah.
Just as a friendly thing to do. So we'll set that up for 5 o'clock, whatever the date is, the day of your neighbor day, I'm sure.
The 5th.
Okay.
I'll double check to make sure. Yes, Tuesday, September 5th.
Okay, all right, good. All right, and moving on to 47 Tusquahannah. Hello?
Hi.
Okay. And we understand that the information that we had, that we originally submitted, which was proposal for the garage to be behind the existing garage, and there's, it may be moved into the front of that?
That's what I wanted, yes.
Okay.
I'm the homeowner, thank you for having me. I've never been to one of these before. I love the house. I moved from Thistle Road, where I was an all-own and a big country house and big yard. And I very much like living in the village, you know, now that I'm all alone, I very much love the house. But I realized that it would be a lot better if I had a dormer over the side porch, which I understand is not an issue at all.
Not, not for us.
That's for next week.
Oh, that would be for H-Part.
Yeah, okay. But also, I realized, until I, until I lost the two-car garage that I was used to having, I didn't realize how much I could like that. And what I was hoping to do was keep the yard and move, and add on to the garage and turn it into a tandem two-car garage.
Okay.
By taking away from the driveway in front. Because the yard is good for my vegetable garden and for my dog, which is a little legal, and my husband about before he died, and the yard's already fenced in. And I would put a couple windows, you know, because we're moving forward and losing driveway, on the side that faced the neighbors, my south side neighbors, the Edmonds, I would put a couple windows so that I could do window boxes and make it, you know, eye-attractive, and not just plain white fence like is there now. And so that was what I was hoping to do.
Okay, all right.
I have a guy down there, I'll draw copies for everyone if you'd like.
Okay, appreciate it, though. Thank you.
Sorry about that, I didn't get them clear yet.
That's fine.
So the cars would be stacked in the driveway?
Yes, one in front of each other. If I put two, if I put two cars, and then you drive one in, and then the other would be behind it.
Yeah, gotcha.
And I spoke to the south side neighbors about that great idea, and they verbally said it sounded okay, but I didn't want to force, you know, force them or put pressure on them. I just told them, this is what I'm thinking, and, you know, others will be in touch with you.
Okay. All right. And, and these buildings, they'll not be physically attached, right? The house and the garage will still be independent structures?
They will still be independent structures, yes.
All right, good. So in that case, the, the requirement then is for a five-foot setback, so you're asking for two feet of relief?
What, what is being removed there is three feet six inches from the property line, the last building built back in 2009.
Oh, the other garage?
Garage, they're not
The garage, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys, Marcy and Susan, you guys were going to gifting in 2009.
Thank you. It's a long time ago.
Yes.
We've been on this board a long time. Okay, yeah, I don't remember that either. I remember the Edmonds is being built, but Yeah, okay, so, so you said it's three feet, I'm sorry, two feet nine inches, three feet six inches?
Three feet six inches, I believe.
Okay.
One side to the right.
It is, according to these documents, the old ones, it's three feet six as well.
Okay. I was, that's three feet on what you, what was, was it presented, so we need to kind of update that too. And I'll ask you to kind of get these inches matching the existing garage.
Yes, it's three feet six inches.
Give, give some heights to us, so we know where the
The height to the peak of the roof is 18 feet. The which other inch would you need?
Oh.
The garage itself is 14 by 25, so the issue would be 14 by 25 to the peak of the roof is 18 feet.
Oh, I think so, 18, eight, 18 feet?
18 feet, yes.
Okay. So, just like the other one, actually, the only thing we need is the height within that foot and a half. So if you could, at some point, give us an eve height also, like at the low point of the roof?
Okay, that is the low point of the roof, I believe, was 90 feet.
And it's the higher side.
On the higher side, it would be roughly 11.
Okay, all right. All right. So, so what the variance request would be then is for a foot and a half relief from the side yard setback for a distance of, I'm sorry, would you say 24? What'd you say that, yeah, 24?
The garage is 24 feet.
Okay, and you know, 11 feet at the low point would have to have to make a height for a high one-story height, basically. Does anyone else have any other questions? Yep. All the questions about aesthetics are H-Part questions, and jingles, and windows, and all that sort of thing?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we'll set up a public hearing also on September 5th, and it'll immediately follow the previous public hearing? And Chris, again, send notices to all your adjacent neighbors. Thank you. Did, did you get a copy of this?
No, but I will.
Okay, you can have mine. Okay, now our last agenda item is 51 Pioneer Street, and apparently the owner is on her way, but may not make our meeting. So we can just kind of go over whatever questions or any information that you're
Can I ask one last quick question?
Are you ready? Yeah.
You said you were setting the public meeting for the adjacent neighbors. If we were to get signed documentation from the neighbor surroundings, would we still have to go to that public meeting?
You don't, we'll still have to hold it. You won't have to come. You don't need to come, but we have to have a public hearing
Okay.
for every variance request.
I'd feel better if they contacted the neighbors, because I don't want the neighbors to feel our own personal impression.
And that does.
You know, if, if they do hee-hee I D and just don't want to tell me to my face, how would we find that out?
Exactly.
I'll notify a room within 100-foot radius.
No, just adjacent.
Adjacent.
It would just be my, my north, my south side neighbor.
Adjacent neighborhood, I will
Behind, across the street, yeah.
Right, I'm sorry.
I mean, the Edmondses are the ones who
Right.
You know, the only people who legitimately have a concern that they were raised.
Right, because they would, they would be the ones that are getting wall behind their basketball court now.
Right, yeah.
Which is why I want to put the windows and the window boxes.
Yeah.
So it looks nicer with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a downstairs, and an actual cover of the downstairs.
Yes.
To hit my basketball.
Well, I think the basketball must be on their garage, so they're they shouldn't be hitting this house or this building. All right, good. Any questions?
I don't believe so.
Okay, good.
So then, what happens after the public hearing?
Typically, we'll make a decision at night, although some may need information or or if we somehow don't have, well, if we don't have court, we're on a public hearing. But we, we have legally up to 62 days to make a decision, but we most often do make an inclusion public hearing. And if you, if you've been to H-bar between, before then, then those are the only two components of approval that you need.
Yep, next, next Tuesday, I believe, is the meeting that we're going to to get everything set in stone so that we can get the authorization.
Good. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome to, welcome to the village.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll move on to 51 Pioneer Street. This is the one that's a little bit more complicated than the other two.
No, it's the one they want four rooms to use.
Right.
Parking space.
Right, so, yeah.
Four spaces and one for primary, which is safe.
Well, actually, the way, in the business district, if you don't have parking, you can, you can, you know, the requirement can be reduced to zero or a smaller number, except for motels, hotels, and short-term rentals. So in this case, if there's only two spaces, then the minimum is still enough for the, to serve the scale of the short-term rental, but it really does not have to accommodate the owner.
The operator?
Right.
So we still, we still need a four-spaced...
Right, you know, I, yeah, I agree that if, if there's a rental of four rooms, they would need to use those two spaces and there is a provision under the parking section about, they would have to get like a five-year lease on other spaces. So they either can limit themselves to two, two rooms rented or those two plus, you know, there is actually, you know, other, there is kind of parking lots nearby. So if, I don't know whether those are available for a long-term lease or not, but...
Just, sorry, to be clear, unlike the residential, transient, I mean, parking must be on-site.
Right.
In the business district, they have the ability to lease adjacent.
Right, under the, under the parking section, yes.
I'm like hard of the setting, but that has to do with downstairs, not parking.
It's really around 333. Okay, so let's, I think that you...
It's a little more searchable.
Okay, so 335 C5 says agreements for off-site parking. Where an off-site parking area is not under the same ownership as the principal use served. Exclusive use provided by deeded access or written lease of no less than five years should be required. These details are, you know, if there's a C somewhere in the lease.
They would only need a lease for two spaces because of the primary where we don't have to worry about that one.
Right, because they, they already had two on-site.
Right.
And they would, but they're short two for what they propose. So they either have to find two more to lease that meets this requirement or they can only apply for two rooms as a short-term rental.
That's why I was confused. I thought they had to have one for the agent that was living there too.
I mean, that seems practical, but that's actually not written as a requirement. The section about, you know, section like 333L says in the business district, the minimum requirement for off-street parking for all short-term rentals, tourist accommodations, motels, and hotels shall be met. For all other permitted, special use permitted, and non-conforming uses, where the zoning enforcement officer determines it's not possible to provide the number of off-street parking spaces called for by this chapter, those parking requirements that cannot be met shall be waived. So, and, and actually, there's nothing that actually says you have to have a parking space for an operator anywhere that I know of.
Right.
But, but those, there's no way to waive it because there are no exceptions for short-term rentals.
Sure, well, let me, let me, I have a lot of period, you know? But it's not saying for operator, but the operator lives there. And it's not just like somebody that comes there to work, you know, and they actually live in the house. So, you know, I mean, you know...
That would be practical, but the, the way this is written, like if you have a loft apartment downtown, there actually, if there is no parking available, you can still lawfully put that in without parking. It's obviously then not as valuable.
As long as the agent was the one that was living there though, because it wasn't the agent to have that parking or leased parking.
It's only the person who, the short-term rental people who mandate the park for which, for which there's no belief of the parking.
All right. So we leave the person that lives in the house as the agent, but not the short-term rental people have that parking?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Right, I mean, the, all this is written in recognition of the fact that there are a lot of properties that have zero parking, you know? So those are limited into what kind of uses they can have in them. If they want the short-term rental or motel, hotel, they have to figure out how to provide parking to support it.
Okay. I guess that makes sense.
But other uses, you know...
For short-term, you would be busy, so they probably would have a car, so that's the main reason.
Yeah, and you, yeah, you're the area, you know where else to park. Somebody else can, someone else who lives here long-term can figure some other arrangement out of.
A lot of them don't have cars and live in that kind of area too, so...
Yeah, it's not ideal, but it's, that was the kind of balance of needs that was kind of worked into the law. So we, so we have, we have to either find, they have to either find two more parking spaces or reduce their, the application to two. And they're kind of, I don't remember the history of this house fully, but I, what I recognize is that in the business district, mixed occupancy is a permitted use, which it sounds like it is off and on. But single-family dwelling is a special use permit. So I don't know whether, if there's a kind of historical, kind of grandfathered, single-family status, then, then we'll deal with, then that's fine, we'll, you know? But if it's changing from having been mixed occupancy historically and basically what they're proposing is no retail use at all, because I presume that the operator's going to be living in that basement level.
Right.
So it may, it may have to go through the process with the trustees to have it get a special use permit for a single family.
I see. You know, it would need an operator that was an STR in there.
Exactly. And it...
They would live in the basement.
Right. Which, and this is...
It's a nice basement.
It's not bad, yeah, but I've been to that little shop that was there previously. I mean, it has a little exterior stairs and it's an unusual kind of basement.
Yeah, yeah.
What I don't remember from the plan is, and it's not critical particularly, but is there a kitchen in the basement? Is it, um... I don't see it on the basement plan. Oh, here, sorry, there's, take it to the box. There's laundry.
There is laundry down there.
So there must be, kitchen is shared, then I guess upstairs. So, so I would say the other option that they have is if they did long-term rental as opposed to short-term rental, then the parking would be, you know, then basically, whatever parking they have, they would use, but there would be a requirement for the total number of places that would typically be needed would be waived because there are, there are no other spaces or space on the property.
I mean, just to say, the applicant isn't going to be able to make it, but the traffic and security is still a bit 45 minutes to where he is, so...
Yeah, we'll be gone. All right. So, so the...
Hello?
So the number of short-term total rooms is the question. And, and that determines the number, or, you know, if you have to figure out if they have more than two spaces that they can provide for parking, in which case they would give them more flexibility on the number of rooms.
Right.
There's a question of the, of the use category, whether there's any kind of grandfather status to that bedroom in the basement, basically. And if they, you know, if they want to reconsider and keep four rooms, but rent them long-term as opposed to short-term, that would have a different kind of set of, and, you know, has like lesser restrictions. So that would be easier to meet the way that it's set up.
In the business district, when you have mixed use, what do you call it zoning? Is it commercial or is it...
It's business.
Business.
Right.
That's the zone, okay.
Well, and the zoning is based on the zoning map. But when you, so this, this is in the business district and when you look at the law, under the business district, it allows mixed occupancy in the business and probably in the commercial too, never in residential. So I think we're going to wait till we get those answers before we set up a public hearing. Does anybody have any other questions or any other information?
Where is their parking?
Behind it.
Behind it.
Behind the building. Right there, they...